Excellent. My bit at first, sorry. Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the meeting of the City Plans Panel. My name is councillor Jim McKenna. I will be chairing today's meeting. Could I remind everyone that today's meeting is being livestreamed on the City Council website? So the public can observe the meeting without needing to attend. City Plans Panel deal with applications from city centre as well as the largest and most significant applications the council received. The aim of the panel is to hear all relevant information from applicants, members of the public, council officers to help members make their decisions. Could I now invite members and officers to introduce themselves and mute your microphone once you have done so? If we could start from my left, Dalja.
Good afternoon, members. My name's Dalja Singh and I lead the city centre planning team.
Good afternoon, all. My name's Andrew Perkins and I'm the case officer presenting the first item.
Good afternoon, I'm Lisa Brannan. Hi, Wees.
Hello, I'm councillor Caroline Gru and I represent Bramley and Stanley.
Good afternoon, councillor Asker Khan for Bournemouth and Richmond Hill Ward.
Good afternoon, councillor Peter Carroll, Cavill and Fosley.
Good afternoon, councillor Algarth Wade, Headingley and Hyde Park.
Hello, councillor Kayleigh Brooks, Little London and Woodhouse Ward.
Good afternoon, Lewis Footit, Senior Technical Officer, and I'll be in charge of PowerPoint today.
Hello, Graham Ashton, Ecology and Biodiversity Officer at Strategic Planning.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Dan Carron from the Woodley Ward.
That was very tuneful, wasn't it? Councillor David Blackburn, finally, Woodley Ward.
Councillor Barry Anderson, Queen of McCrom, Adeline Warfield Ward. My mind just suddenly went blank.
Good afternoon, Andy Bowles, Governance Services, and Clark to the panel today.
Good afternoon, Amy Davis, Legal Officer.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Carr, Head of Development Management.
Thank you for that. And I do know it's warm in here. The air conditioning hasn't been turned on. It's now been turned on, so the temperature should drop a little until you guys start speaking and then arise again. Can I? Can I? Can I just say that councillor Garth Wade is doing her last meeting. She come along, she did a side visit and she's here. She's soon gone on to a more elevated position. She will be our next Lord and Mayor of Leeds after next week. So congratulations from all of us. Okay, moving on then. The stats, please, Andy.
Thank you, Chair. Moving on to the agenda on item number one, we've no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under item number two, there are no exempt information on today's agenda. Item number three, there are no late items. Moving on to item four, could I ask members if they've got any interest to declare? No. Moving on to agenda item five, we've received apologies for absence on behalf of councillor Campbell.
I understand this climbing a mountain in Spain. It sounds lovely, doesn't it? As long as it's not too high. Okay, if we can then move on to agenda item six on page seven. Minutes of the meeting held on the 23rd of March 2023. And can I take the opportunity to thank Caroline Gru for chairing most of it? I'm afraid I was leaving early and the first item did take rather a long time. Thank you, Caroline. So moving on then to page eight. Page nine. Page 10. Page 11. Page 12. Kayleigh, please.
Thank you, Chair. I know that in the minutes it doesn't record what our preferred option was in terms of the affordable, like there was option one or option two. I can't, I can't see that it's recorded.
You can.
Yeah, I, I, I think the resolution was that the option should be put to the ward members and that's what we did. And, and we've since done that and the ward members have chosen the option where they got the contributions for biodiversity and green space to be spent in the local ward.
Moving on then, page 14. Page 15. And finally, page 16. Thank you for that observation, Kayleigh. Can we now move and pass them as a true record? Thank you. Right then, moving on to page 17. Councillor Khan. Councillor Khan, was it, sorry?
Thank you, Chair. Just before we move to item number seven. I mean, we've been requested, we've been asking for a report on the city centre, the mixture of developments. I do welcome the student development in the city centre and also, also welcome the residential development in the city centre. And I remember councillor Peter Gruen used to ask for that report as well when he was the member of panel for this panel, a member, and also Tim Hill used to be the chief officer. And we were promised that we want to get a report on the, you know, what's the prediction of our student accommodation? And because we want a mixture of our city centre, we don't just want a cluster of different usage in our city centre. And is there any way Jonathan Carr can highlight on this and bring the report to this panel?
Perhaps I can just clarify that a little bit further. We did have some training at one point and I can't remember which director it was under, where the universities attended and other people, developers, I think, were there as well. And they took us through their methodology for calculating the need for, for student places. But I do agree with, with councillor Khan that it would be very helpful to have a summarised report on that and to examine whether it still applies even.
Thank you, Chair. Would it be appropriate to include it in the Sma?
In, in terms of reports, I, I, I understand the report was actually taken to Development Plans Panel, but probably a while ago now. So maybe with the change in membership, maybe it's due to be revisited. It'd be helpful to take that again. At the time, the question was about need and whether there were too much student housing coming forward. And at the time, the consideration was that there actually, that there was more than enough demand for student housing without, without undermining the, the broad mix, especially within around the city centre, inner areas. But that can be looked at again and brought back, which actually leads, leads on to the question that councillor Brooks has posed. I understand work is currently being carried out for the Sma and I think it's a perfectly reasonable question. It's about housing mix in the round, isn't it? So we can feed that back to policy colleagues who are coordinating that work.
Caroline, please. I'll bring you in next. Oh, it's me, Caroline.
I was just going to say, as Development Plans Panel Chair again this year, I'll make sure that's fed into the agenda.
Yeah, I think, I think as well as obviously raw numbers, there also needs to be consideration for affordability of student accommodation too, because a lot of the development that has gone up is not affordable for the vast majority of students.
Thank you, Dalja, and thank you colleagues for the feedback. And I think it'll be really useful if we have a time scale as well when that's going to be coming back. Otherwise, we won't be just moving on. So if we can have a time scale when this report will be ready and bring back to this panel, that'd be really great as well.
That's a valid point. I'd make another point when it does go to DPP, which you should do first, should come here because colleagues, we don't all sit on the DPP and it needs to be discussed around this table. And second one, can I ask a reasonable time scale to bring it back? John, you're in the odd seat now, mate.
Yes, as councillor Gruen's just mentioned there, it would depend on the DPP's programme of, of reports and also the workload of the policy team as well. I would like to speak on behalf of the policy team who has its existing work programme, which is quite full in terms of LPU one and then ALE local plan 2040 to, to secure that progress as well. But certainly something I'll take back to colleagues.
Well, it'd be nice if we get it within the next six months, which is a reasonable time scale, isn't it? Okay, then moving back to agenda item seven on page 17. Andrew, when you're ready, please.
Thank you, Chair. Let me just check that this. So members will recall that this item was previously considered at the 23rd of March City Plans Panel, in which this application was deferred with members requesting that the daylight and sunlight assessment be made available to the public. This document was made available to the public and further clarification was sought on aspects of the assessment. In response to these comments, the applicant has now requested to remove the consideration of scale relating to building nine, which is plot nine at outline stage, and that they only wish to seek the principle of an office use to this aspect of the site as well as access. So just to recap, this application relates to the construction of four buildings, which follows on from previous resident, from a previous residential scheme, which members approved in December 2022. And the wider master plan was also presented as a pre-application in January of 2022. And this just shows the site. So this is a residential element that was consented and they're on site and these are the elements that are under consideration at this meeting. So the site is located to the south of Whitehall Road and these slides will just give a little more context in terms of the evolving area of Whitehall Road and the wider character. The current use of the site is as a surface car park, of which the temporary planning permission has now expired. Right. So out of the four buildings, two are coming forward in detailed form and these are buildings two and five and are as an office and multi-story car park with ground floor commercial uses and the remaining two will be an outline. So this slide just gives members an idea of the separate elements of the proposal and this shows that the two buildings which are in detailed form and relate to an office against the Riviera, which is this one, plot two, and then a multi-story car park, plot five, which is against Whitehall Road. So this just shows the other two buildings, which are in outline form and relate to the scale and access for plot four, which is an office and apart hotel, this one, to the west of Premier Inn. And also plot nine, which is the north of Whitehall Riverside Apartment Block, which is only considering the principle of office development and access at this stage. These elements would then be subject to a separate reserve matters application relating to appearance, layout, landscaping, and this would also include the scale for plot nine when a reserve matters application comes forward. And as part of the discussions at the previous plans panel, members also raised comments regarding the proposed landscaping on site and the level of biodiversity net gain, which was achieved. Officers have now reevaluated the on-site green space offering and the uses that some of these spaces serve and whether these are comparable to existing green spaces within the city centre, which have also been delivered through similar developments. There's, as part of this proposal, there's improvements to the existing semicircle paved area to the front of Whitehall Waterfront, which is this area. And this will consist of a riverside park, including tree planting, lawned areas and opportunities for play. There's also riverside improvements, which consist of creation of a five-metre shared route for cyclists and pedestrians along the, with planting areas and a raised terrace to building two, which will contribute to the natural surveillance of this area. It is acknowledged that these areas were also covered in the previous residential consent, which was to ensure that whichever application comes forward first, the spaces are delivered. A mechanism will be put into the section 106 to ensure that if the residential element delivers this space, then a revised green space contribution will be secured as part of the legal agreements. The proposed on-site green space and pedestrian routes will also improve the north-south connections between the riverside and Whitehall Road, forming part of a wider public realm network. The proposed enhancement to the north-south connection from the Riviera to Whitehall Road to the west of buildings two and five creates a minimum width of nineteen and a half metres with two three-metre wide pedestrian and cycling routes, along with linear planting and creation of seating amidst ornamental perennial and tree planting, which are in these areas, this one, sorry. And these areas now have now been reconsidered and given that these spaces would function similar to existing green spaces, which exist within the city centre, the amount of on-site green space has been recalculated, which now results in compliance with policy. And then in terms of the amount of biodiversity provided on site, the metric assessment concluded a loss of biodiversity habitat, habitat units on site due to the proposed, notwithstanding the proposed public realm improvements, then this was due to the loss of an area of existing grassland to the west of Premier Inn. Biodiversity net gain should be delivered on site and given this, the applicant has now included a green wall as part of the multi-story car park, which can be seen on these slides. And this has increased biodiversity credit slightly. Where biodiversity net gain on site is not possible, this may then involve an off-site contribution, which will be secured via the section 106 agreement. The biodiversity unit sum would be used towards biodiversity projects and measures and would be delivered in the same ward or adjacent wards, subject to agreement of the council. Graham Ashton is here today from Nature Conservation, in case any members have any questions regarding biodiversity. And then in summary, officers consider that this development is a positive addition, which would continue to aid in the regeneration of this key brownfield site within the city centre, which has remained undeveloped for many years and one is, and is one of the last in the city centre. The proposal has now removed the consideration of scale for building nine, as it was observed that members were generally supportive of the overall proposal and that concerns related to building nine only and the potential impacts upon existing occupiers of Whitehall Waterfront. So removing the scale of building nine, this allows the development at this stage would allow more detailed consideration to be given to the final design in the context of the concerns raised and prior to seeking planning consent at any reserve matters stage. And this would also allow the developers to get on site and start the construction of the full element, elements, which are the office and multi-story car park. So as previously noted, the proposal would also deliver all section 106 obligations and as such, a recommendation of approval is proposed. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Andrew, for that report. There's no speakers on this item today, so we can go straight to questions from members. And as Andrew said, we have Graham here at the back, who may, you may have questions regarding biodiversity and he says, excuse me to answer those. Starting with Peter, please.
Thank you, Chair. It's a couple of clarifications, I guess, first. So in terms of the buildings in outline, I note that means of scale is to be considered later, but it does note numbers of stories in the outline application. So I wonder whether, first question is, based on the fact that it gives eight slash eleven story and then a couple of other alternatives in there, can you just clarify to me what we're saying in terms of the height of the building today, if we grant that outline? So that's my first point. Second one was in terms of the, the half circle of green space, which is a difficult one because it's in two applications. So I appreciate how we've managed it in terms of this application. So if somebody else delivers that green space first, there'll be a contribution due to this. What would happen in the event of the other way around? So if, if this development delivers it, obviously the other application, which I believe is on a different site, is it's not on the same site as these two buildings, would obviously then be delivering less green space than we originally asked them to, if that makes sense. That'll do for now. I'll come back with smaller items later on.
So in terms of the height of plot nine, all mention of the actual scale of development has been removed now, so they're only seeking the principle of an office use with access. And there's also a section 106 obligation now, which requires the travel plan and review fee and also car club membership for plot nine to come forward at reserve matters, which will be secured in terms of the scale of development and the amount of floor space that's proposed. And then in terms of the riverside area, it's understood that Glenbrook, the residential element are on site at present and they're seeking to discharge conditions and commence with construction. So it is likely that this site will follow Glenbrook when that's been constructed out. What was the?
Regarding if, if this is completed before the other.
Yeah, that was my, yeah. So in terms of the riverside area, as I've said, Glenbrook, which is the residential development, which was consented back end of last year, they are on site at present and looking to start construction of the element, which will deliver the riverside improvements. So if they do, then there's a mechanism in the 106 that secures that and recalculates the green space provision requirement.
Okay, thanks. I guess in, in terms of the second part, yes, they're on site. I guess we don't have any confirmation that they have to deliver that before this starts, really, do we? So I do just have a little concern, obviously, if, if anything goes wrong with that development and this developer ends up picking up that semicircle, I'm not sure how we, how we square that with the existing development, but, but that, that's the difficulty in this one. In terms of the stories, it, it's just in terms of the title of the development in terms of the report that I've got here, that it does still say outline application for eight slash eleven story. Obviously, in the recommendation, it doesn't necessarily clarify that more in any way. So the recommendation is obviously to defer and delegate to the Chief Planning Officer and I was feeling that it was in line with the above, which does say a various number of stories. So I don't know whether that needs to be clarified on the, on the report and whether we can agree that statement going forward, because otherwise I very much wouldn't like to get to a position where we're looking at the scale of a building and, and it's proposed that we've already agreed the height.
No, well, that, that will be amended. I mean, that's clearly not correct because the, the report makes it quite clear that, and the submission that we've had now since last panel, that plot nine, it will not agree the scale, height, stories at this stage. So that's obvious, an obvious error.
I've got councillor Blackburn yet and I have two more speakers, which I recorded.
On building number nine. The thing is, is we might be well saying we're not, although as councillor Carroll pointed out in the document, it does still say eight to 11 stories. But I mean, it seems to me where, and I'm not commenting here, I'm just bringing this in as part of my question, we're kicking Cam down the road a little bit. The fact is, is that if we don't define what heights these buildings are up to, we're not putting any control in. So what we're saying is, yes, we'll pass this, pass this application off and then leave an open check for, for the next application and there's nothing there to say that don't bring it back. And part of the problem was the height for those buildings and how they were ever shadowing. So all we do, we haven't solved the problem, although all we do, we passed it on for another committee to, to look after in a few months or a year's time.
No, you're quite, you're right in that we, we don't have a solution today in terms of this is a scale we'd like to build from a developer's point of view and panel, can you deliberate on that and decide? It's because they, they want to take on board the concerns that panel raised and, and they want to, the time to do this properly and we will still have that control at reserve matter stage. The fact that there isn't a story height parameter now doesn't mean that they can just build any height they like. It will be the subject of reserve matters and it will be subject to agreement at this panel. It's for members to decide whether that's an appropriate way to go forward or not.
I don't know what's wrong with that today. I think I understand your response to councillor Carroll's very first question, which is about building nine. But I'm, I'm looking at the statement at paragraph four about the fact that the light analysis needs to be, we need to compare two separate ones, one if the building is it tallest and one if it's not as tall, because that, our concern was about the restriction of light and how it falls. So we can't make a decision about the height of the building unless we know the comparisons between the two light studies.
We're, we're not asking members and the application isn't now asking members to make a decision on the height of buildings on plot nine. And therefore, whatever height comes forward at reserve matter stage, we'll need a daylight assessment at that point. So what five four says is that the current assessment that's been submitted is on the basis of a specific height and shape and form. It becomes a bit of a moot point if that height, shape and form is different at the time we are asked to determine it.
But I think my point was, it's only in the light of the comparisons or light analyses for two different type buildings that we could come to a conclusion about the light impact of each height.
All I can say is that without a scale of building there, then there isn't a consideration needed for daylight and impact assessment. There will be, any building there is going to have some impact. The assessment is whether that's acceptable in the context of a city centre setting. That's, and that's what will probably be considered at some point in the future at the reserve matter stage and we, we as a panel, you as a panel, will need to deliberate on. But we haven't, but we're not putting that forward for discussion today.
Do you think that's fair to the residents that are concerned to keep it open this long?
We have to deal with the application that's before us. So the application, you can submit an outline application, you could reserve all matters and just have access and we do that on other sites. So that's the base upon which we have to consider it. We're not prejudicing the concerns that residents have raised. I would advise that those concerns can still be considered at reserve matter stage.
So Brooks.
So just to be clear, this would be coming back to this committee, right? Because it does ask us to defer and delegate. So I think, I think that's why the panel is in a state of confusion about this, because I mean, they're not the only ones. I'm also very confused about it.
You're being asked to defer and delegate on the current proposals, which are part in full for two buildings and part in outline for two buildings. The buildings that are in outline will require reserve matters application in the future. That reserve matters application will be, those reserve matters applications will be brought back to panel.
Are we clear on that? Okay, we will have a say. We will come back and we'll look very closely at the height and then determine whether the light is suitable when we have the reports. All right. Come in, Kayleigh.
I think, I think I'm going to go back to what Caroline was saying about, sorry, councillor Gruen, was saying about the, without a light assessment, we can't make a decision as to whether it's appropriate or not. Light.
Yep.
Yeah, just to clarify my thoughts, I am aware we're not making a decision on the heights of those buildings today, but I do think that we need a comparative light study in order to come to a view in the future. That's what I'm saying. Is it the intention to do that before the decision is made? That's what I'm saying. Is it the intention to do that before the decision is made?
So there'll be a light study submitted as part of the reserve matters application. Um, which obviously, as Dalget said, will be presented back to members.
Thank you for that, Andrew. Any more questions from members? Uh, Ed, uh, Al, please.
Yeah, I would like to hear a bit more in detail about the biodiversity plans as um was offered in the introduction, please.
Graham, are you okay to?
Um, so the the scheme uh has been outlined, it's um. Will result in some biodiversity loss as measured through the uh biodiversity metric. The way of measuring biodiversity on site, which measures habitats and gives figures towards it. So it results in a uh loss of biodiversity, a shortfall. And because of the difficulties in improving the landscaping scheme and. Get into a a measurable net gain of biodiversity on site. Uh, this, it's acceptable to to uh nature team within the planning service. That an offsite contribution is made to um have biodiversity. To get the the project up to a ten percent net gain. And that biodiversity would be delivered off site on land. That is currently in the process of being identified, but is is aiming to be uh on in the same ward. Or near to the ward, uh, the Honslet and Riverside ward, there's some. It's a limited amount of land suitable for it, but I will, I am meeting with the. Green space colleagues who used to be Parks and Countryside um to try and identify a site. Um, that where the biodiversity could be delivered.
Can we be reassured that this will be a site where there isn't much biodiversity at the moment? Not just adding to a site where it's it's already there in some quantity. Because it does vary across that ward and there is very dense housing patches and bits of brownfield land that are. Just lying a bit barren, old industrial buildings, et cetera, as you know.
The biodiversity um could take the form of an enhancement uh of an existing site. Um. It could be a creation of a certain habitat. Um, it but what it needs to do is deliver the requisite amount of units. So that will be on a some green space that already already exists in in the ward. Um, and it may be that it might be enhancing uh some some habitat that's already there. So it might be improving an area of scrub by removing some um undesirable species that we don't want there. Or it could be improving a grassland, making it more floristically diverse. Um, but it it's got to deliver the right amount of units. And so that is often only possible on a larger bit of land rather than um. A small like grass verge, for instance, and it's also got to be land that's available to be used. So that's at this stage. Um, our Parks and Countryside colleagues, uh, we're working with them on their land holdings to see what they have available within the ward. Uh, so that's what we're looking at. And apart from the parks land, there's nothing yet available. We're in kind of early stages of uh. Developing uh, well, trying to find offsite land to deliver. Any biodiversity units that couldn't be delivered on the development site.
Going back to the development site, then, what um could you just remind me, what is the loss of biodiversity in that site?
So the assessment um by the developers ecologists was there was a baseline habitat unit. Uh, measured by the metric of one point zero four habitat units. And following uh the development, there was going to be naught point five five. So uh my maths, uh, is that's a point four nine units loss. So we seek a a measurable biodiversity, measurable net gain. And our guidance and soon to become law will be a ten percent gain. Which is a point six habitat units. That's a ten percent gain. Takes you up to uh one point one four units in total.
We we've been coming back on. Are you okay with that, uh, Alvers?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I I take it, Graham, that what councillors will be consulted regarding where the offsite work might be done.
Yes, um, colleagues in green spaces who will be the land managers. They will keep ward members informed of uh their proposals. They will need to look at the site initially uh to see what's possible in terms of biodiversity uplift. And they will then be able to discuss with ward members what they think is possible. But it's an early stage. As as time moves on, we're going to have a better picture. Uh, throughout the certainly the the green space, the Parks and Countryside landholding as to what biodiversity uplift. May be possible on different pieces of land. The Parks and Countryside uh bringing uh are in the process of employing a biodiversity net gain technical officer. Who will help with this process. And as time moves on, as we approach the mandatory time for the ten percent uplift. A a clearer picture will develop as to what is possible in each ward.
For that, Graham. Kayleigh, please.
Thanks, Chair. Um. I'm just, I'm just wondering if if a site isn't able to deliver a bio biodiversity net gain uplift. Um, is that not overdevelopment of a site?
Uh, the the short answer is uh not necessarily. Um, it it's not about the amount of space that's been left over, it's about the quality. As much about the quality and the variety and diversity of that planting, that nature. Now, what we're probably finding is that in the city centre sites where our site allocations. Are quite rightly expecting more efficient use of land, higher densities of development. That uh you 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 are maybe going to struggle with providing the 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 type of. Planting and quality that you might need to uplift the biodiversity. But conversely, some of our sites which have been vacant for a long time have got scrub land. Uh, character which according to the metrics is given quite a high metric value. So in terms of the metric, it 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 does create a numerical. Uh, 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 difference, you know, you you have you have a higher starting point because of the nature of the scrub. Uh, but that's just the way the 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 metric is worked out. We recognise that in our guidance. We recognise that there will be sites and situations where we're not going to be able to achieve. The biodiversity net gain that that we we want. And in in those circumstances, an offsite contribution is more appropriate. In order to meet the other policy requirements for efficient use of land. Um, I I'm sure Graham can add to that if I've got any of that wrong, but I think that's the general approach.
Um. Did you want to come in, Graham? Sorry.
Rather than just saying, yes, I agree with Talget, um. There is a mitigation hierarchy. We do seek to have the biodiversity achieved on site. And that is our priority before offsite. Um, we look at offsite, but yes, in in this circumstance and in others, certainly in the city centre. That isn't always possible. So for compensation, we look at offsite biodiversity gains where it can't be achieved on site.
Thanks for that. Um, do you want to come in on?
I can do.
Um.
That was it, please.
Yeah, it's just a point of clarification on the initial issue that was raised by councillor Carlin and other members about the description. Uh, the actual description of the outline development is actually correct. It is a bit confusing in that the for plot four, there are two alternative parameters. Uh, depending on the nature of the use. So the outline description reads eight or eleven story office building stroke hotel. Uh, stroke apart hotel building, uh comprising seven stories and plant for office or. Or alternatively, it's going to be a ground plus nine stories and plant for hotel or apart hotel. So it's not, the the option there is for either a hotel building with ground floor accommodation. Or an office building with ground floor accommodation. The heights are actually the same, but because the floor to ceiling heights are different for the two uses, the number of stories are different. So that's the complicated description for the outline, but that only relates to plot four. And then the end bit of that paragraph, uh, after the last semicolon is actually for plot nine. It says, under principle of an office building with only means of access to be considered with all other matters reserved. So the description is correct. Uh, I just wanted to, I think earlier on, I I didn't want to be accused of misleading you in that there. There was an error in the description, there wasn't.
Thank you, Chair.
I take it that's clear. Can we move on to comments then, please? Comments? Councillor Blackburn.
I'll go back to what I was saying when we were questioned, when we had questions. As as far as I'm concerned, we've we've not moved forward as all here. All we've done, we've taken part of an application out. And uh we haven't resolved that 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 where the objections objections were. We haven't solved any of any of them. All we've done is we moved it down the road. And to my way of thinking, there's nothing to stop somebody coming back with exactly the same application uh later on. And and arguing the uh. Uh, arguing for it. And I I I just don't think it's right, this, I I, you know, I I'm not. I I suspect we can't do anything about it, but the fact is, it 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 seems to me that we're just moving goalposts to set the situation. And then it's going to come back again.
Do you David? Any further members' comments? Yep, Peter.
Thank you for that clarification, Dalget. Yeah, that that the um. The description is is a bit confusing to try and work out exactly which building is is which one. Um. So I wonder whether that's just something we can we can take into account for for future, maybe put in the building numbers or the plots in in there if if we can. I know that would end up with a description that takes more than the front page, but there you go. And. It makes sense what we're trying to do here and I appreciate, yeah, the only real. Big issues we had in this development was of that one building. And um obviously, there's still discussions on that, but I can appreciate that the developer wants to continue to start going on site and they can start going on. The 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 sections that we're, we, I I think we're all reasonably happy with before. So I'm happy to progress this, given that we're not uh discussing or or giving any agreement to a a a height or scale of that other building. Um, and that that will come back to reserve matters. I think it's a pragmatic way forward that allows the developer to at least start on site. And then we can look at that and that other more detailed matter as time goes.
Peter, any further comments? Is there any member prepared to move with the recommendation then? Peter, is there a second? Councillor Gruen, okay. Um, we'll do votes in the usual way, show our hands. All those in favour, please show. Those against? And we better record abstentions, I guess. So abstentions, please. There's three. Uh, that is uh clearly carried and we shall defer it to the chief planning officer. And we look forward to seeing it again. If we can move on then, please, uh, and we're on to page seventy five, I believe. Oh, you're doing this, are you, Dalget? I was looking for. Okay, as you can see, this was side visit today in Duncan Street. Above the old Rockcliffe School uniform place and many of you were on the side visiting. Thank you for that. When you're ready, Dalget, please.
Thank you, Chair. So the proposal is for the conversion of upper floors at seven Duncan Street. To ten short stay accommodation in the hotel use class. Um, the the site for those members that went this morning. Uh, it's part of the city centre conservation area. Uh, Dunk seven Duncan Street is a grade two listed building. Um, it's on the north side of Ball, uh, well, Duncan Street. Uh, but uh just to the uh east of Ball Lane, which is further off here. And then you've got the junctions with Brigitte to to uh to the west, sorry. And with Central Road to to the east, and you can just see the outline of the Corn Exchange. So it's very much forms the 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 core of the, uh, it's located within the core of the city centre. Uh. Some members will remember this site as a former location of Rockliff's. Um, uh, but uh, Rockliff's vacated the site some uh fifteen years ago. Um, in two thousand and six, consent was given for uh redevelopment of the whole building to provide. Commercial uses on the ground floor and fifteen uh flats on the upper floors. Um, the commercial uses were implemented, uh, including a separate access. If if you see where that gentleman is standing, uh, there's actually a a a as as. A bespoke access uh to the upper floor flats. Uh, but the upper floor flats were were not implemented and. Um, the the uh, it it's been vacant since two thousand and six. Uh, just in terms of the uh, uh, the to the side, to the eastern side of the site is a shared. Or it's an access route which uh, uh, the the applicant has rights of access to, but so do the commercial units. And so do the uh, the owners of the property on the other side of the access. Um, further further to the east. And to the rear of the building is an enclosed yard area. Uh, this yard area is partly used for bin storage. Um, but it's also an outdoor seating area to a basement bar in this building. The access for the basement bar is off this side access. Um, so that's that that's the uh outside of the building. In terms of the inside of the building, as I said, it's remained vacant for a number of years. Um, for those members that were brave enough to go in this morning. Uh, the it it's in, it's not in a very good state. Uh, a lot of the original fixtures and fittings uh have clearly been taken out. Um, there's some parts of the property are in a a state of decay. Um, and I think we 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 saw that there was, there'd been a rat infestation quite recently. Um.
No.
So. So these are, these are, uh, but the, you know, where there are, there are some surviving features like the the windows. Um, and and some of the uh detailing, corners detailing and so on. And the proposal is very much to work with what's there um in order to repurpose the 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 use of the building. Uh, and to maintain it, uh, enhance its character. Uh, and that's just some photographs of the of the decay that's happening. Um. So the proposal is for to reuse the existing entranceway from Duncan Street. Um, to the upper floors. Uh, and at ground floor, the the existing bin store will be rebuilt, it will be made slightly larger. Um, and the managing agents for the hotel use would have a key. And the managing agents for the hotel use would have a key and control the bin store in terms of. The guests having to. Put their rubbish outside their rooms on a set day. Those rooms will be, those bags will be taken to the bin store. And then the management company will empty the bin store as frequently as is required to make sure that is all managed in a in an appropriate way. There's a, there's an existing fire escape route that will be reprovided and that's from this. Out outdoor seating area which serves the bar, as I said, in the basement of this building. And and that's a photograph of the existing entrance from Duncan Street. And then on the upper floors, the the space which is fairly open plan at the moment will be divided to create four self-contained hotel apartments. And they range in size, the smallest one here is twenty three square metres. There there's one that's thirty four square metres. These are a bit larger, thirty eight square metre and thirty seven square metres. But it it's a, it's a hotel use, so our space standards for residential use don't apply. And we will ensure through the condition that this is controlled as a hotel use and not as the occupants' long term accommodation. So that's the first floor, the the staircase, a new stair core will be inserted here to continue on upwards to connect to the upper floor. And that's the the second floor, same arrangement and that new staircase coming up to this floor. And then two larger units will be created in the roof space. And they they will be have duplex accommodation, so rather than four units, you get two units with the split basically down the middle here. And these will be up to ninety three square metres in size. And there'll be a betzening floor put in to make use of the the large roof void for that extra accommodation, again split between the two units. And then. In terms of the the outside external works, there there's little change to the front and the side apart from. Cleaning the windows, refurbishing them and cleaning the 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 ceramic tiling. But to the rear, there's a bit more work, but it's really tidying up what's there. The proposals are to remove a redundant flue here to shorten, there's an existing fire escape. That runs up to this level because of the internal stair core. That extra height to that floor isn't needed, so the fire escape will be reduced in height to to this level to. And then there's there's some bricked up windows which have a toilet block on the other side or or they're just bricked up. These will be reopened with new windows introduced. And there'll be some ventilation added. The idea is that secondary glazing will be introduced. And there'll be mechanical means of ventilation introduced, so windows don't have to be opened. To ensure that future occupants, there's no conflict between future occupancy of this as a hotel use. And the surrounding bar and restaurant uses. And that's a photograph of what the existing rear elevation looks like at the moment. As you can see, it it very much is. Characterised by plant and by escape stairs. And it it's very much, it it's not visible from the from the from the frontage, from the public routes. And I think from a conservation, this is a great touristy building, but from a conservation heritage point of view. The works are actually, they they either have a neutral impact or they're considered to be a slight enhancement, particularly with the opening up of the windows and the removal of this flue. Now, the the reason why the the application is brought to panel is because. The upper, the the upper floor consent for residential accommodation. Was the reasoning for allocating this site for housing use in our site allocation plan. Or alternatively, as office accommodation. Clearly, the proposal is for hotel use and therefore it's a departure from the site allocation plan. And and there are no delegated powers for dealing with that, so that's why it's been brought to to panel. However, our policies do recognise that where circumstances have changed or where designated uses are undeliverable. Then as a planning authority, we can take a different view. It's clear that with the long term vacancy and with the state of the building. That the previous residential use hasn't proved deliverable. There's also the added benefits that providing that the hotel use is a perfectly acceptable town centre, city centre use. And and providing it's done in the way that's proposed, it will actually safeguard the future of a listed building and improve its character. So we think there's good reasons to go away from that departure and and support this. There have been some objections raised by the owner of the property on the other side of the access road. Their detailed comments about the rights of access and use of that shared access. The the need to retain a fire escape, the potential for noise impacting the future use. Those comments have have been addressed in detail in the report. The the shared access issue is really a civil matter between the two parties. In terms of the noise insulation issues, the proposals provide for secondary glazing and mechanical ventilation. Which will actually provide a lot better noise environment than existing, but as some members who went inside this morning will have noticed. It's actually not that noisy inside, but but we're safeguarding that anyway. And and I think there was an issue raised about the lack of cycle parking. Yes, there's no opportunity for cycle parking. There's no opportunity to put it in the hallway, they don't own any of the other demise on the ground floor. Occupants would have to lift the bikes if they did want to, there's nothing to stop them, but they have to lift them up the stairs until they're flat. I think highways have have accepted it in this case. It's pragmatic not to have cycle parking and it's in a location which is very sustainable and has access to public transport. So on on balance, we're asking members to support the proposals, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Daljit. Questions from members? Al, please.
Yes, thank you, just on cycle storage, starting at the most recently. Most recent comments, where is the nearest bicycle rack to this location and is it secure?
There isn't secure cycle parking, but there is cycle parking. For visitors short stay across the road on Duncan Street. And there's also some down Briggate just around the corner.
And there will also be new cycle storage in the refurbishment of the rail station. And also the public bike car scheme, which is due to launch, I believe in the autumn, will also be something that, you know, obviously visitors could make use of.
Yes, thank you, that that seems fine. I was one of those who went up and looked at the, looked at what was there. I must say, in seven years of being on Plans Panel, it's probably the worst place that I've seen. Dead rats, rat estimate, the smell was unbelievable. No, no, I'm glad I've not got the job of having to clean it up, but I'm. I could see the potential there, although there is quite a lot to be concerned about. In terms of if the residents do experience noise, and I agree, it was very quiet there. I was really surprised considering that it's right on a busy street. I assume there's no actual receptionist at this apart hotel, that people will get. A key or a something to let themselves in, so therefore if they do experience difficulties. I want, I would want to be reassured that they would be able to know how to get that resolved straight away. Wondering what the arrangements would be for that. And I've got another question as well about the actual units. I'm assuming they wouldn't be cooking in there. Even though some of them might stay for ten, three months, I don't know what the thoughts are on that.
Thank you for that, Al. Daljit's looking up, but we we do have the developer here, Paul. If you want to come forward, Paul, and address those questions, it might be helpful. It's best to get to know straight from Paul, isn't it, I think?
Hi, so yeah, just to pick up on the point of noise, so it's a smart hotel, so everything's going to be done via an app. Which is then in direct access with our management team. So this will be flagged up instantly on our side and then can be dealt with pretty speedily. Thereon regarding the cooking within the units, yes, there are kitchens. Because we're anticipating sort of contractors in the week who are going to be there for the week. And having done that previously myself, you know, you want a home from home. So it's nice to be able to actually cook, even if it's a microwave meal or anything like that, it's giving them an opportunity and being different to a hotel. So we're just trying to balance it out for people and give them a bit of an option there. John, take over on the the management piece. All right, okay, okay.
Yeah, hello everybody, Matthew Shepherd, I'm the agent for the application, yeah, so if you look on the proposed plans, you will see that there are some small kitchen pods. In the floor layouts, as Paul said, the idea is that people staying there will be able to get in touch with the managing agents about any any issues that they need to.
So, okay, Councillor Garthwaite? David?
You say it's going to be managed from 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 a distance. I mean, at what distance, if if an emergency goes up and somebody's required to go there. To the building, how far away are they, you know, are they within a reasonable call?
So we'll have a team based in Leeds, both from a cleaning point of view, a security point of view, a maintenance point of view. So all all angles will be covered basically directly from Leeds.
Thank you. Any further questions from members? If not, can we go on to comments, comments? Dan?
Hey. Good time, look, I think it's a good application, it's bringing a vacant unit, vacant site into use. In a part of the city that we would want to encourage buildings to be used, take something for the long term. And when the time is right, I'm happy to move, Chair.
Asgar, please.
Thank you, Chair, and also welcome this development and where this development is located, just next to our Leeds Kerr Gate Market. And I do encourage the cooking itself, actually, you can do a bit of shopping around the Leeds Kerr Gate Market and cook healthy. Meal actually for, so that's good.
I do, you promote Leeds, yes, but. Any further comments? Barry, please.
Just just quickly to say, I totally support this and also the change of from the site allocations plan. I think it's a good model. And we have looked at it from the Kerr Gate Market side, wanting to do something similar, there's definitely demand for that in the short term. Based on the conversations we had on site this morning, I was one of the ones who shirked going in when the rats were there, so I'll be honest about that. The smell was just overpowering, but I do think it is the right thing for that particular location where there is demand.
Barry, and in fairness to the applicant, I should say, they don't own the building yet, but they're waiting to see how permission develops. And we have assurance that they will deal with it when they need to. This Kurno has not been prepared to do anything about it, so we we can't, we can't blame the developers. Al, please.
Yes, I welcome this and I think that what the developer has said and what's written here shows that the issues have been well thought through. And the objections taken on board and dealt with, so I'm happy to support it. One thing I would say is that the little street just at the back of the district nightclub is in a really shocking state. And I know that's not part of the developer's responsibility, but it certainly needs attention.
I totally agree with you, any, is there anybody who would like to move the recommendation, we seem to be all in tune? Asgar Khan and Councillor Garthwaite, second it. Oh, do you, go on now, we'll have you, no, I can't, I can't overrule the Lord Mayor, sorry, I'll have to. Okay, all right. You just got a sulk, okay, okay, I get it. Okay, then. All those in favour of the recommendation, please show. And I see that's unanimous, so thank you for that. And thank you for coming in, answering some questions, Paul and the agent too, thank you. You wish to move on or do you want a comfort break at this stage, we've only one more item? Comfort break, ten minutes then, I'll give the applicants a chance to get ripped. Prepared? Good guys. So pass over.
Thank you.
It was an old brainer, that one there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we restart the webcast, please? Okay, welcome back then, panel. We have the applicants here and we're on page 93, again, item nine. As the applicants will know, it's your presentation, you present to us, make the best of it, what you can, and we'll ask the relevant questions and perhaps give you a steal and a comment. Sorry, I'm, I'm missing out, Jeff. Okay, welcome back then, panel. We have the applicants here and we're on page 93, again, item nine. As the applicants will know, it's your presentation, you present to us, make the best of it, what you can, and we'll ask the relevant questions and perhaps give you a steal and a comment. And it's a proposal to. Sorry, I'm, I'm missing out, Jeff. Okay, welcome back then, panel. We have the applicants here and we're on page 93, again, item nine. And just to say, we've collaborated very closely, we've presented to us. Make the best of it, what you can, and we'll ask the relevant questions. Over the course of six meetings, we've been supported by a range of consultants, including policy. But in particular, we've had input from conservation and design colleagues on the design development. So at that point, I'll send over to representatives of the developer team. Thank you, Jessica. Please, when you're ready. If you can introduce yourself, speaker, we'd be very grateful, thank you.
Hello, I'm Spencer John from Caustophine and Wright Architects, the director and lead for this project on behalf of my client Fusion Students and with the planning consultants, also DPP. So I'll start by way of introduction. This is just a summary page, just to show you what we're going to cover today. But we'll take you through our pre-application material, how the design has evolved, where we get to with the proposals, and then lead to any questions that you may have. So importantly, this slide just identifies and introduces the site. I'm sure you'll be familiar with the importance of the core as part of the city centre. It was very much reinforced to us in our first pre-app that this is a prime site and we needed to approach it from that perspective. The client Fusion and Try7 in partnership are well renowned and have a record for delivering high quality PBSA developments, they have a record of delivering over 15 of those. So they take their schemes through planning and also to site and operate. There's some examples there on that page, which are in cities such as Sheffield, Nottingham, Newcastle. Before we go into the proposals, some of the considerations from a sustainability point of view that were taken on board. We did carry out an appraisal of the existing building, understanding if it could be repurposed and the limitations around repurposing that building. Viability in terms of conversion to other uses is very complicated, extremely difficult with a very inward facing development currently. Conversion to other uses limited because of the floors, the floor values that are in there and the limitation on adding additional floors to that building. Part of the sustainability, sustainability challenge is also to demonstrate the future flexibility of the building. On the right hand side of the page there, you can see a comparison between a typical student residential wing and a potential other residential, whether that be BTR or PRS, and the way in which these buildings can be converted if needed in the future. The adapted principles, adopted principles in terms of sustainability will be achieving a target of a minimum of excellence in terms of BRM. The heating system for the building, we're fully electrical, so no, no use of gas boilers and so on and so forth. And then within the materiality of the building, both externally and internally, there'll be goals achieved for sustainability. So stepping back in time on the site, looking at the urban grain and the historic development. The maps to the left hand side, you can see take things back to the late 1800s, importantly. And what we found that in carrying out this study, that there was very much a tighter grain in historical times, almost also a greater level of permeability through the site, a variety in height and a variety in texture and material of the buildings and so on and so forth. Very much in contrast to its, its current state as the core. Importantly, one of the buildings originally on the site, the Red Hall, was the first red brick building in Leeds. The image is on the bottom and just take you through the timeline of development that's been seen on the site, going through the periods from the Red Hall through Schofield's Department Store and on to its, its current condition of core. We're in the city centre conservation area. That's sort of our primary consideration, but not only that, we've got some very powerful and very strong heritage assets that surround us. Some great buildings, some, some great buildings to refer to in terms of informing our proposals. Detail and materiality that we'll, we'll go on to explain further. The most, I would say the, the key ones to take from this are the ones along Albion Place, which we, we bound. And it's particularly number five, which, which has influenced the way in which we've designed our proposals along Lands Lane. So this is an excerpt from our character study, this just picks up on one street. We've got three streets to deal with, we've got King Charles Street, the hedgerow and also Lands Lane. The hedgerow character is very much a kind of a civic scale that you'll all be familiar with. The buildings are predominantly a body of red brickwork, but then there's accents of stonework and glass and metalwork insulated to the upper floors. The scale here is, is very different to that on Lands Lane and elsewhere. It does have that kind of grandeur to a certain degree. And the way in which the tops of the buildings are dealt with is something that we've, we've taken note of. The streets around have got some real kind of rich tones and rich materiality that we've picked up on. What we wanted to just make, make clear at this point in time is that without the final bricks being selected, what we plan to do is to have a range of tones throughout the buildings. So there'll be a subtle family of bricks as opposed to having jarring differences between the buildings. So on to our concept and on the top left hand corner, you can see a figure ground diagram of the historical times. A diagram in the centre, which is the current core arrangement, which very definitely demonstrates the fact that it's an inward looking development with, with little permeability. And where we're seeking to move, so the right hand grey and black diagram just demonstrates how we are dealing with the site as three separate buildings and introducing two streets that run east to west. So the 3D models on the bottom reinforce that point. We're going from what is perceived at the moment as a very solid impenetrable building or something that's got a series, series of entrances to a point at which you've got three buildings. And then moving on to something that then articulates at a high level to respond to its context. On the right hand side, the diagram demonstrates on the uses that will be incorporated into the building. So first important thing to say there is that ground floor retail use will be reintroduced in quite a, a different fashion to how it occurs at the moment. It won't be inward looking. Well, yes, we'll have the prime spots along the hedgerow and Lands Lane. But by introducing those two new streets, we give the opportunity to retail, for retail to turn into those new streets and connect to King's Charles Street, importantly, which is, which is a bit of an outlier at the moment. So in dividing the building into, into three, effectively, it gives us the opportunity to respond to the key characteristics of the area. We've taken a very contextual response and approach to our, to our architectural proposals. The three character areas we've picked up on are the hedgerow, Lands Lane being the central building and then Albion Place being the third building, which begins to refer very closely to the historic setting. Looking at the ground floor layout on the left hand side, you can see now the principle of two streets passing east to west through the site. Those are aligned with the historic arcades that permeate, permeate through this part of the city. And that was very much about us trying to key this new vision for the core into the historic part of the city. Everything you see on that ground floor, highlighted in pale blue, is retail space. So you can see that we are re-providing as much as we possibly can at ground floor as retail. The yellow elements are the circulation for the student accommodation, which is on the upper floors. So importantly, on the top, top left hand corner, which faces onto the hedgerow, the main student accommodation entrance would be in a prominent safe location for residents to enter. They all enter at that location and circulate through the building at the first floor. An upper floor plan to the right hand side just identifies for your purposes, the diversity of accommodation, so there aren't just one type of student accommodation. So there aren't just one type of student accommodation here, there are a range of en suite apartments. So groups of three, four, five, six students can group together. And have shared living, dining and kitchen spaces. And then there are a mix actually of studios which don't stick to one size, they provide a level of affordability that covers a wider group. And that's picked up in this diagram here, so a couple of the key, key constituent parts of the accommodation, typical en suite rooms and a typical studio. The important thing to take from this is obviously Fusion's product, they're very proud of, it's a high quality product. But the intention for space is to ensure that students have got somewhere to move away from their bed, so they've got somewhere to sit and, and have space to look out of a window or work at a desk. And that happens in all rooms, not just the premium rooms. An interesting diagram provided by a landscape architects, they're very much at concept stage at the moment. So the, the image you see at the top is a section cut through the development. Our three buildings, which provide three courtyard spaces at first floor for student amenity. The primary concern there is to provide obviously the students with their external amenity. The added benefit is that we are really introducing biodiversity gain for the site. And it's a real opportunity to, to improve the, the location, this part of the city from that perspective. You can also see there highlighted in orange, the, the new streets and the way in which they relate to the buildings around them. So an important diagram here is a, a solid to void diagram of elevations which cuts, cuts along the hedgerow. Sorry, it's out in ten minutes. Okay. This cuts along the hedgerow and just picks up the change in character. Similarly, on Lands Lane, we, we demonstrate that we changed from the existing core character at the top. To something that has got far more a human scale and a, and an approach that ties in with both Albion Place and the hedgerow. The aerial view just demonstrates how those routes pick up on the access of the arcades. And then I'll just take you through some external views of the buildings, these views are from the hedgerow. And you can see how the, the body of the building is dealt with in brickwork to pick up on the scale of the hedgerow. Articulation at the ground floor, extra detailing on a two story base, which is appropriate scale at that point in the, point in the city. And then a transition down to a single story base as we move into Lands Lane where a different scale occurs in the context. And then we're moving down that street, so you can see the emergence of the other, the other two buildings. How the top of the building is articulated to pick upon the context. And then importantly, showing you the depth and relief in the facade as part of the design. So that second building along the street dropping down to a single story base. And then as we move through, you begin to see the streets that emerge as well. Cutting through one of the streets, just to give you an understanding of the courtyard space that's provided and the fact that the quality of the architecture returns on those streets and doesn't just finish at the ends. And then finishing with the third building that sits right next to Albion Place. And the fact that we've dealt with something in far more a, a human scale, smaller, smaller windows, smaller fenestration treatment. But still retaining the rich detail to, to make it part of the family of three buildings. And that important view from Albion Place, so that's the, the listed building in the foreground. And you can see how the scale of buildings increase as it steps up Lands Lane. So that's our street scene. And you can see the connecting glazed bridges which occur at first floor. And I'll just finish on some street scene views, so this importantly from King Charles Street just points out the fact that at the moment you've got a very inactive facade. Got really what feels like a back of house condition. Intention is for these streets to really enliven that from day one, but then also stimulate change and growth as we head further west in this part of the city. So I think the important message to, to just finish on is the fact that we've dealt with this as a piece of design and as a piece of architecture. And also a, a new development for the city. Driven by Leeds as a city and referring to the city quite closely, so we believe it is for Leeds and it's, it's very much about Leeds. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sure there'll be questions from members, I'll now invite them to ask the questions. Peter.
Thanks Chair. Overall, I think it's a really positive development to what is, I'm afraid, a shopping centre that isn't very well visited as far as I think. I think I had to go in for a particular shop, I can't even remember what it was, once in the last five years, I remember, and suddenly remembered it was there since. Must be ten, fifteen years ago when that was where the, the main shops were in the, in the centre of Leeds and you went in there for HMV and all the other bits, but that's all gone. So I think this is a really good reuse of the space, the creating the, the streets through is really positive. Because that is more like an extension of what happened slightly further down into the city with the arcade, as you say, so that's a really positive approach to this. And it'll do a lot for the, the other streets around, which some of them are, are still. Car through ways to get to some of the parking areas for, for this and some of the servicing for, for the existing shopping centre, which I think is really positive. And there were just a couple of points I was going to bring up, when, when we look at it, so I see how the designs come in, in terms of how you see it from the hedgerow, from taking it into account some, some of the other buildings around. But it does look, when you see the full frontage there, as quite a wide expanse of brick. Obviously, a number of the buildings had entrances on the corners, but also have something that's a feature in the centre of them as well, which breaks it up. And I just wondered whether you'd looked at, at that at all, so that was my first question. The second one was, I really like the, the, the ideas that are coming forward for those. Private roof terraces, shall we say, and, and the kind of features you've got in there, I noticed a bit about urban gardening and whatever, which I think is really useful. And I don't think we see enough of in, in student development, somewhere that they can call a, a garden for themselves, which quite often they, they may not get. So I think that's really positive, especially if they want to grow vegetables or anything like that. When we look at this little side streets through, there didn't seem to be much greenery throughout those. And obviously, when you're walking around this area of town, it is just a massive expanse of paving for quite a long time around. So I wondered just whether you'd thought any more about what you might be able to do in, in, I guess, those smaller streets that are in between to make them maybe. More, more, what's the wording? I'm not sure, mine, mine's gone blank on that. But just to make them more livable spaces rather than looking like places that people just walk through as they're doing their shopping.
Peter, please.
Yeah, it's certainly the first point regarding the treatment of the hedgerow facade, we did explore at some length. With some really good guidance by officers. The, the current condition of the core does have a, does have a central entrance. And what we were trying to move towards is something that does refer to the historic nature of, of, of this part of Leeds, where the corners were more prominent in, in times gone by. And actually, entrances being purposeful. And if you're drawing attention to a piece of, part of the architecture, there being a strong reason for it. So our, our corner to the, to the west is for the student accommodation. And that's kind of highlighted on the upper floors by further detail in the surrounds and we've emphasised that corner. Once again, we feel that the likelihood is that there'll be a strong retail entrance to the eastern corner. Which, which kind of provides that balance. What we didn't want to do is kind of introduce patterning and changes in material which weren't justified by function. And we're more about dressing the building. And I think the, the expanse of that elevation is also dealt with, the fact that the windows are grouped in kind of bays and twos of three, twos and threes. To establish a rhythm that looks comfortable and, and in keeping with the, with the scale. And then the additional detailing that we've introduced is very much kept to the two story base. So you'll see that there's a contrasting pale brickwork lining around the, around the entrance. So that, that appraisal was very much done, we went through a number of design iterations, we think, you know, the process worked really, really well. The other point regarding biodiversity and greening of those routes, I think is, is an important one. I think ideally, we would have been showing you a more developed landscape layout today. And I'm sure that will include. A number of ways of introducing that green to those spaces, because we do have the opportunity. Whilst we know their brief is to maintain, ensure maintenance of the buildings can happen. And that we can use the route on the, the most southern end of the site as a fire tender route. We will have opportunity for planters, for seating, for a diverse street scene. And it's to the benefits of the development that you encourage people to dwell, as you said, rather than just purely transition. I think the other thing to note there as well is they are wider than the arcades that precede them. So the pedestrian experience will be that they'll come out of those arcades that are those compact spaces and are just about providing a clear route. To something that is, we intend to be a destination, a, a positive place to land. So if that's.
Thank you. Can I bring in Aska, Councilor Cal, please?
Thank you Chair, I could also echo from Councilor Calil, I also welcome this development, it's going to be lively and high quality development once it's been completed. From the visit, this morning's site visit, when we looked round. At the moment, it's too much bricky, that's my opinion, it's, you know, it's red brick. And I think it needs to be broken up with stones and we were looking on other surrounding buildings on hedgerow. There are some buildings with stone and red brick. And I think at the moment, it's just a bland red brick and we want to get away from red brick buildings all in Leeds actually. So because it needs to be high quality building and it needs to be lively and new building there. The other concern I had was the connectivity on King Charles Street. When we walked down right at the bottom where the car park is. The access from so Albin Street to King Charles Street wasn't, it was really not safe for people to walk in the evening, especially with students. I think it needs to be landscaped, it needs to be more brighter around there. And also can you go through the services for this site? Because at the moment, the, the services are done under the, from the car park. So therefore, will it be same services location or will you be changing different locations?
So, so to your first point about the, I think the materiality is probably where we sit. I think some of the material we've included in here show a range and we talk about the, the tone and it not being monotonous, one red brick. I think there's, there is an overarching theme that we keep a sense of cohesion between the three buildings. So what we don't, what we didn't want to do from the outset, and, and I think there was a, a common goal between us and the, and the officers was. Not to have a distinctly different hedgerow building to the other two buildings that, that sit with it. I take your point about some accentuation in stone and actually the base of the building, you'll see that the first few courses of each plaster is, is dealt with in the contrasting pale material as well. But I think we, we, we welcome your comments and we'll, we take that away prior to, prior to submission of the full planning application.
Yeah, I'll, I'll pick those two up, I'm Oliver Corbett, a planner at DPP. So on the, the through route to Albion Street, we've, we've spoke about that with offices at City Centre Management. And it's sort of a dingy underpass at the minute. So we, we're happy to commit to some improvements there as part of the section one or six with offices, so we'll, we'll discuss what, what we can do there. And we are looking at, as we say, the, the wider landscaping picture, places like Lands Lane, resurfacing works there as well. On the servicing point. All deliveries and servicing will be via King Charles Street. So the delivery vehicles will come in from the north down to King Charles Street. And there's on street loading areas for the first two buildings. Block C is then going to be serviced via the, the southernmost access through route, which is the fire tender route as well. But yeah, there, there isn't a basement as there is in the core, it's going to be servicing from the street, but there is servicing paths through the buildings to get to the retail units. On the Lands Lane and Hedgerow frontages.
Kelly then, please.
Thank you Chair. Right, I've got a lot. Right, so I think, I think first of all. With the, with the amount of people that are going to be living in this, in this block, I'm just wondering. Have you, have you given any thought as to health infrastructure for these people, like what? The nearest GP is a light. Have you, have you got any ideas as to like whether, whether the light is able to, to deal with the increased demand there? For access, for takeaway and online shopping delivery, I'm just wondering about. How, how deliveries will be dealt with during the day when it's supposed to be a pedestrianized area? Like how, how will that potential conflict be resolved there? Because with the, with the density of the development, it's potentially going to have quite a lot of, you know, takeaway delivery and online shopping deliveries. Have you given any thought in terms of improving? Improving like. The standing of students who live in this kind of blocks with the existing community. And by that, I mean, we've, we've got a high level of transience in the city centre, right? If students are aware that there's an existing community that they can plug into and then maybe when they finish studying, they're able to. You know, they've, they've already made friends with people who already live in the city. Would it, would it be possible maybe to have a, a community room or something available for the community to use? In terms of use as well. There's a lot of purpose built student accommodation is going up in the city and has gone up in the city. And residents are very concerned that the city centre will end up just being monocultural, like just all students and not very many full time residents. So I was wondering if it'd be possible to include some just regular residential development. So it's a mixed use rather than being monocultural, monocle, monocultural. Is that everything? Just check. I'll do that a bit later.
Thanks Kelly, if you could address those questions, please.
Yeah, I'll try and, I'll try and cover the ones I've got written down, I think that's everything. In terms of health infrastructure, that's something we can take away and, and make sure that that's, that's appropriate. In terms of the deliveries, takeaways and online shopping. As I said, all, all deliveries will be via King Charles Street via the loading bay, so Amazon delivery vans will have to park up. Fusion are going to have a twenty four seven manned front desk on the single access point, so all deliveries will be dropped off at the main entrance. Held for residents to either be distributed up through the building or they'll come down and collect it themselves. But the idea is to limit the amount of time that those vehicles are waiting. And they'll not be accessing Lands Lane and Albion Street outside of the pedestrianized hours. So I've been talking to officers about the security and the ring of steel bollards that prevent deliveries during those hours. So we're, we're going to be working to include those on the side streets to prevent vehicles going through those pedestrian areas. In terms of the integration with the wider community and community room. I think it's something with the retail at ground floor, we're, we're conscious of trying not to lose too much retail from the core. We, we know it's currently not a high occupancy, but the important frontages on hedgerow and Lands Lane need to be kept in a retail use. There is some opportunity. There is some opportunity for on the side streets where the frontage of retail isn't quite as important to have alternative use. It might be something we take away. On the amount of PBSA, I think it might be something that officers come back on, but we're still seeing the need in the city centre really high for student accommodation. And it does bring that benefit of freeing up private accommodation in Headingly and Woodhouse outside the city centre, back into the regular market. In terms of including a mix, I don't know, Phil, you want to come in on that in terms of how compatible it would be with the layout we've got?
Phil Rowe, Head of Operations for Fusion. Yeah, so in terms of our amenity, we carefully designed the space so that we've got the single point of entry for students and quite an extensive amenity, as you've seen with the internal spaces in the courtyard. In terms of what students are looking for, eighteen to twenty-one, vulnerable age, they wouldn't want to be mixing in the amenity with a regular residential age of user. So that would lead us to have to segregate the scheme into different youth classes with different receptions, access, et cetera, which we don't find is particularly compatible. The numbers that we've got on the scheme as it is allow us to provide really extensive and considered amenity with the single sort of staffing group of people with extra security staff at night, et cetera, community members of staff who focus on events and wellbeing and things like that. So that's why we proposed an all PBSA scheme.
You okay, Kelly?
No, I think I'll just come back on the access for deliveries. I don't know how it's going to work if if Amazon, for example, I'm sure other delivery services are available. They just get given like a route. So what happens when that delivery driver isn't able to access to drop off? Like, what, will they just have to go back and then it comes back again? Or will they be parking up and maybe getting tickets? You know what I mean?
I think in terms of King Charles Street itself, that there isn't currently any use down there apart from the spec savers right at the bottom. So it's quite quietly trafficked anyway. And it's going to be the servicing entrances for our building. So although it's a more active frontage and we're opening it up, it's not going to be heavily trafficked. So we'd anticipate that all delivery vehicles could use King Charles Street. I think there's three or four loading bays going to be provided. So that should be more than sufficient to cover those sort of deliveries.
Any further questions from members? Can I say, following up from Councilor Khan's observation that there is an awful lot of red brick in this? And if you look across the Royal Dortmund Square, which is a square, there's lots of interesting architectural features like Portland stone and it breaks it up an awful lot. And in some ways, the end that's nearest to King Charles Street frames that square. And I don't think you're doing justice to the square. I do think that we certainly need a lot of string courses and possibly good quality stone, Portland stone or something very similar along there. I'm not against red brick and I see that there's, excuse me, quite a bit of detailing there which doesn't show up on the photograph. But I know you quote the history of Leeds and Leeds, the red brick city. The city with the Queen Anne front, one member used to say in my time in the early nineties, and a Mary Anne rear. And I think that the current nineteen eighty-six Schofield's extension reflects that very well, particularly along King Charles Street. I'm glad you talked about active frontages. It's absolutely vital that we have active frontages. And it also has to be a place, if it's to emulate the John Lewis Centre further down the hedgerow, which is of high quality, that we should be improving the quality or you should be improving the quality more and maybe take a little step back from red brick. I come on the planning committee in the late eighties and nineties and whatever you got was red brick in Leeds, the red brick city. And at the end of the day, we had a chair at the time, I won't name him. But he was adamant that you could build anything in Leeds as long as it was red brick. And members like myself, you don't remember them, you won't, don't. Anyway, you know who I am, but I mean, we won't mention them. We pointed out, some younger members at the time, myself and a man who is now an MP for this region, that there was other materials and there are other quality materials. And I do feel that you want this to be a prestigious and very successful centre, which we all do around this table. We really, really do. But to emulate something like that in my book is is not doing justice as architects, are you? You can do a lot better than this. And please, you know, it's a misnomer really, isn't it? King Charles Street, it's not a street, is it? It's a back alley where people forgotten about. There's a spec savers down there and nobody ever goes into it, you know? I mean, that should be enough to tell you how much it's used. Fully support what you're doing, absolutely happy to support it. But I do think in material terms, you can do an awful lot better than that. And I'm sorry if my comments are not acceptable, but don't forget, I've lived and granted planning permission through the Leeds red brick period and I have my firm opinions on it. I think we moved away from that. And I hope we're not moving back in a big way. But I'll leave it there and I look forward to when it comes back to panel to see some improvements. Thank you. Caroline?
Just two points to add to that Chair. And I agree with the sentiments that have been expressed around the table this afternoon. I would like to accentuate the points that have been made about thinking again about the green space. In that particular position in town, I do think it's very important that it makes a green statement somehow or other. And there are lots of ways that you can make green complement the city centre with a parks feel perhaps. I'd love to see some more than you've done when you come back. And the second point is, I'd like a feel of what it's going to be like sitting in one of those courtyards or standing and chatting in one of those courtyards in terms of the quality of light, the sunshine and the general feel of how it's going to be out there. Because these don't have balconies. I often mention balconies. I think I understand why it doesn't have balconies. I can accept that. And you are trying to provide a green outdoor amenity, not a private one, of course. And if people are living there for a number of years, that can be difficult as well. So I would encourage you to think about how to make the most of the green space. And, you know, give enough of it for people to properly populate it and enjoy it.
Caroline, is there any more questions from members? Does any member want to make a comment before we? Kelly, please.
I'd just like to disagree, but very respectfully about the brick. Because I can see the logic in, you know, it was the Red Brick Hall, was it? Sixteen, sixteen and like, I can see, I can see why the developers have chosen red brick. I can see that. But I am supportive of perhaps like breaking it up a little bit at ground level.
Any more comments or can we go on to questions? Al, please.
Yes, this is the comment. I actually like the red brick. I realise it's a matter of taste and some do and some don't. And I think it actually looks very elegant.
Further comments? Can we then go to page one hundred and twelve, please? And there's a number of questions for members to address. Seven point six point two. Do members support the principle of the development? I think that's a yes, big yes. Do members support the proposed scale and form of development subject to the outcome of wind testing at application stage? That has to be a yes, hasn't it? Do members support the proposed approach to amenity and space standards within the development? Okay. Okay, more detail required? Yep. Do members consider that the emerging approach to public realm is acceptable? More details, okay? And finally, do members consider that the development emerging approach to servicing is acceptable? Kelly?
Sorry. Yeah, I can see that there's potentially going to be some issues, potentially. So I'd like to see a little bit more thought around it.
That's fair enough. We have talked about servicing. Yep. Okay. With that in mind, can I thank the developers for the presentation? And we really do look forward to this being built. And we certainly won't miss the old building. And can I say, I wasn't about at the time, I did not give planning permission to it. So please don't blame me. Thank you all and have a good afternoon.